I'd like to call the meeting to order to September 18th. I have an open and planned official order at six thirty P M. And we start with the roll call of the commissioners. Are you?
Here.
James?
Present.
Olivia?
Present.
Juliana?
Present.
Anna? Anna, I'm trying to say it in Spanish. Oh, great. Thank you. And me, so I would love to record note that we are on the forum and that we are all here.
Just for the record from staff, we have Mike Parry, planner, and Reece Everin, our communications manager, and Tom Moore, Assistant Public Works Director. And we have our consultants here from Fair and Peers, Kendra Bradman, and Drew Hadkorn.
Fabulous. All right. So do we have any people in Zoom that's?
There is nobody except for us on participants, so.
All right, so then I guess we will skip the public comment but non-agenda items. And next, where do I want to go? Where are? From last meeting, the concern minutes. Has anybody had a chance to look at it? Or do you have any things that you want to make comments about? Or were there just like a motion to approve that?
I think we're doing good.
Second? Yeah. All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Haney to approve the June twenty-third minutes and a second by Commissioner Juliana. All of you ever say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, carry seven zero. All right, our next item on our agenda is an update to the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. And the city's going to introduce our speakers.
Yeah, so it's good to see everybody again. You guys heard of in the summer. And so one of the reasons that we haven't been meeting for a while is to give time for preparation of this, which is a pretty significant piece of work and pretty important piece of our update to our comprehensive plan. So that's again, we do it in twenty twenty-four. And this is one of the very first elements that we'll work on for that. And we have Fair and Peers, our transportation consultants. So Fair and Peers and Tom Moore, Assistant City Public Works Director, have been working on this draft. And I'll turn it over to Kendra and Drew to introduce the amendments, kind of what's the content of the amendments, and just whatever you guys want to introduce about it. And then we will still want to open a public hearing, even though it doesn't look like we have anybody present for that. So get the record. After they get the introduction, I will turn it back to you guys to open it up for discussion.
Great, and we have materials that we could put up on the screen or not. I mean, whatever is easier for you. I can just run down kind of an overview, at least to start.
I like visuals.
Yeah.
Can we get on the screen?
Yeah, would you like to?
If you want to join the meeting, we have a link. Then I can just turn it over to you to present on the screen.
I also have a flash drive. Last time we had a, can we do a direct hook up or would this be?
Right now. Was that great? Use the flash drive or I hope you got that.
Yeah. Let's do that.
And then do you want Drew to kind of sit at the table?
Sure.
Okay, it's crowded, so I'm going to stay down here.
Yeah, why don't you guys take a look?
Take a look.
Whatever, whatever works. I don't mind sitting back here and saying it's a question here. Is there elk? What else? Is there elves? Okay.
So here we are, a couple of months later from our last meeting with you all. I think most of you were at that May meeting, right? So we've done quite a bit since then. If you recall from our last meeting, we were talking about focusing this update on multimodal policy overall, but then focusing on developing a multimodal level of service and incorporating that into the transportation plan. So really, a new feature of the transportation plan from the last time the city did this ten or so years ago. So we want to talk about how we actually incorporated that multimodal level of service into the plan. And then just generally, how do we update the plan for other requirements that the state has, that PSRC has in terms of making sure that the city is conforming with what the state is looking for and also what the region is looking for in these plans. Before I get into some of the policy specifics, did anyone have any questions for us? Just as we haven't checked in in a while before I actually get into some of the details.
The thing that I really liked was that, you know, you do reference, you know, the rest of the plan, you know?
Yeah.
It's not that even as we go forward with this, there's still a lot of changes that will become that you do reference. But that's it, you know, that it has to match up, so I very appreciate that.
And sometimes what happens with all of these different elements that are eventually going to come together in the comprehensive plan is it can be a little confusing in terms of where do policies live? You know, do, obviously, some things cross over, not transportation, but other areas. So, you know, parks, for example, obviously, parks has a walking component. So do we talk about the parks feature of transportation in the transportation section? Or do we just focus it only on parks and open space, things like that? There's always an open question and hopefully we organize in such a way that it's not confusing. That, you know, it tells the whole story without being confusing. I think we actually see the comment about, you know, where do policies live or where should they live? That sort of thing. So policy updates, what we did was we kept basically the same framework as the last transportation plan with policies, but then we updated the language. And we also deleted some policies that were no longer relevant. If you remember last time, we were talking a bit about there's some overly specific policies. And we wanted to make sure that policies would remain relevant for a long time. So if there was a policy that was related to a specific project and the bus gets built, well, then that policy is no longer relevant. So making sure that the policies make sense for it, what really is a twenty-year plan. Also, what we want to do with this policy update is make sure we're consistent, as I mentioned, with the state and the region. So one thing that we did was we added some policies to make sure that we would be consistent and that PSRC would approve the plan and that it includes the things that they would be looking for. So some of the highlights here, one is talking about safety. That's in the Vision Twenty-Fifty, PSRC, that's one of their top line goals, is improving safety, focusing on safety. So we do reference the Washington State Target Zero Plan, which is Vision Zero. If anyone's been working with that, it's the idea that plans should focus on eliminating traffic deaths and serious collisions. And basically, that is the goal, is to have zero. So the Washington State as well as PSRC have a Vision Zero Plan. And so basically, this policy is working with the state and the region prioritize that as a top-line goal for the city as well.
Just for clarification, you guys know what PSRC is? No, that's the Puget Sound Regional Council. So it's a regional planning and transportation authority. Sets targets, growth targets for residential and commercial growth that the state has to follow. And so a lot of what's in the transportation plan has to be consistent with those targets.
Yeah, good clarification. So the Vision Twenty-Fifty is their long-range planning document, and they update it about every ten years. And they will actually review all of the different common plans that the cities produce and make sure that it's checking all the boxes in terms of what they're looking for. Another aspect is electrical vehicle, electric vehicle preparedness. So thinking about finding opportunities for things like charging stations in infrastructure. And related to that, climate change, thinking about resiliency, having recovery plans, thinking about things like stormwater management and prioritizing those things. So some of the modal policy updates, we created, and this is in the packet for tonight, we created a pedestrian priority network map, which shows visually the areas that the city would like to focus on, as we were talking in the last meeting, areas particularly around schools and parks. So this map shows essentially for the primary parts and schools of the city, the quarter mile radius around those. And the darker shades are some of the overlapping areas you can see in downtown. For example, there's a big overlapping area, which makes sense. So one of the policies is just focusing pedestrian improvements in those areas. And related to that, a specific crosswalk policy that wasn't there before. And talking about the emphasis on safety, minimizing constant distances, and language around accessibility. And so obviously, that would include things like A A accessibility. But the emphasis is that parks and schools and related uses should be accessible to all and accessible via walking as well as the other modes. Any questions on the pedestrian priority map? Does that make sense? On the bicycle side, we developed a level of traffic stress map, which shows whether a roadway is either a low-stress roadway or a high-stress roadway. And we use a best practice standard for looking at speed limit on the road, looking at traffic volume, and the level of facility that would create a low-stress network depends on speed limit and level of traffic volume. So obviously, the busier the roadway, the more improvement would be required to make it a low-stress roadway. So on the map, the areas in red would be the high-stress areas. The areas in green would be the low-stress areas. Basically, it's the arterials that are in the high-stress category. Although some, there's somewhat of an asterisk, for example, North Bend Way, there's the parallel trail. So if you took those two in combination, then you could say it's a low-stress facility because it has the trail. But obviously, on the street itself, it would still be high-stress. And then, so we create some policies just to elaborate on that in terms of focusing bicycle facilities to create a low-stress network and basing it off this map and this grid.
So the yellow?
Yellow are trails.
Those are the neighborhoods.
So including the neighborhood connector trails.
Okay. And so is that, well, do we already have that or?
Those, yeah, those are the, that's the existing trail network.
Okay, and so the proposed is, what's proposed to make change about those? Anything more?
We can talk a bit about that in the project list. There are some in the project list improvements that would help connect some of these.
Okay, so this is, this is just saying, this is where we're at right now?
This is the existing map, that's right.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. On transit, so in the existing plan, a lot of the focus on the transit policies was around service. And we wanted to revise that to focus primarily on the things that the city has direct control over, which would be bus stops and access to those bus stops, more so than service. There are not a lot of ways that a city can directly employ a service. Obviously, indirectly, they can coordinate with agencies like King County Metro. But the goal here was to focus on where the city has direct control over. And, you know, we can, and we've certainly talked about that more in terms of if the city still would like to say, let's have a service benchmark or service goal that we would like to achieve, even though we don't have direct control over King County Metro and their choices and their funding. You could still have a policy like that, but the intent was to focus more on what the city has direct control over. So those were some of the policy highlights. And then the next step down would be, how do we get from those policies and goals to actually creating a long-term project list? So far, we're focusing on what's in the tip. So the tip includes both projects that are likely to be funded and built in the next six years, but it also has an additional set of projects that would be beyond that, presumably maybe in more of a midterm range, like a six to ten-year range. And then beyond that, we could also start thinking about in that full twenty years are the additional projects beyond the tip that we also want to talk about in this transportation plan update. But just to show you some examples of how the tip is informed by our policy updates, which is a good thing because the tip was actually developed before we did all this transportation plan update. And the tip actually does align well with all of our policy updates, which is a good thing. So one thing, obviously, around safety, the new roundabouts, there's seven new roundabouts on the tip list. Roundabouts have several benefits, and safety being achieved among them. So this aligns with, again, back to what PSRC's top-level is, which is a Vision Zero Plan. And a lot of sidewalk extensions. So again, something that aligns with the pedestrian policy and that map. So you can see, these are the sidewalk improvements on the tip overlaid with that pedestrian priority network. You can see quite a few of them are within those focused areas. And this also serves an interesting question in terms of, obviously, you know, the most bang for your buck in terms of benefit, one could argue, would be in the downtown area. But you also think about geographic equity, you know, not focusing everything in one area of the city. And I think the tip does a good job of including projects in all areas of the city. And here's a list of other projects that are currently on the tip for other improvement categories. A lot of this focuses on traffic operations, and a couple of these do directly benefit auto level of service, thinking about especially in intersection downtown, then to go North Bend Way, if an intended bypass project that would help out there, especially thinking about the new growth that's coming into the city. So accommodating that growth and keeping traffic operations down to that desired level of service.
Do you talk about signage as, you know, helping people know where to go? And any of these tips or whatever?
That's a good question. And we, in our stakeholder interviews for this, we did receive a lot of comments about that in terms of directing people downtown. That's, it's, we could definitely add something like that. And that's an interesting one from, it's kind of an economic development improvement to just letting people know there's, you know, eight million annual visitors. And do they all know that downtown North Bend is there? And how cool it is and the local industry there. So we could definitely add some language around that.
Yeah, I feel that we could work on that. A better signage, being able to move people in the right direction instead of them being like, I don't know where to go.
Right.
Or even like parking, like, I don't know, but it's very well. But, you know. Yeah, people might only know exactly where the truck is.
Yeah, we were talking about that too. And even the, you know, people wouldn't mind that real estate, can't park there, yeah. And, you know, it says parking rights, so you can take a lot of automatic transit, but you can also park there that there's a downtown, right?
Right, no, no, that's not.
I will say, just one item, just going through the element itself. We do, of course, have a series of policies that are in there, implementation actions. So one of the policies around pedestrian items, I just want to call out Policy Five Four Point One has a sub-element that says to implement the system of pedestrian street crossings and signage, which prioritizes pedestrian safety, minimizes crossing distances, reduces pedestrian exposure to vehicle traffic, and lowers vehicle speeds and improves accessibility for all. So maybe not, I'd be definitely interested in hearing your thoughts on how that can be bolstered. And, you know, again, to kind of reiterate, you know, how does all this work? We have a lot of policy statements. What does that do? It gives the city teeth to, as folks are coming in to develop, as products are being composed, to kind of recommend that additional elements be incorporated. It also, as Drew has mentioned, will be informing the project list. So if there's a different type of wayfinding or signage, we'd definitely be interested in that.
I guess on that note, too, I'm just going back to the roundabout line. I guess I have some concerns with how many roundabouts there are. You know, there's, it's just a significant number. And if we're talking pedestrian, you know, visibility and being seen, I mean, most people go through the roundabouts and don't pay any attention to pedestrians. And so, I mean, for that reason alone, it's kind of a concern to me to see so many roundabouts in the plan. I mean, roundabouts are great to keep traffic moving, but not on pedestrians.
I mean, yeah, that's both ways. There's lots of studies that show the opposite, that you're minimizing crossing. You got a median where people can dive into the median there, it's shorter crossings. Based on the geometry coming into it, they have to slow down, right? So you're, so I see both ways, because I do see people flying through, but I also see people that it's reported and people that are new to the area, because we do have a lot of tourists that come in. They slow down because they're looking for things, which is what we want them to do too. So there's two types of people that drive downtown.
That you could speak to, policy in our policy section, we've got a pedestrian facilities policy section, and that could be some other policy about consider pedestrian safety and visibility and design exceptions.
Right.
That could apply to no matter what.
Right. Yeah, I mean, yes, that that changed a pretty, but you do know from a number of residents, there's already concern about how many roundabouts there are, because we are a small city, and that's a lot.
The roundabouts also come with the truck lines as well. It looks like there's some overlap with the truck lines. I said, I'm not sure what type of truck, like, is a part of the traffic, how big that is. But we have so many roundabouts in the same area, and the alarm truck runs, like, what is that proceeding with? James, I'm basically, kids walking from school home, something like so. I will say that, a comment on that as well.
Are you guys still kicking around the idea of, like, the mini roundabout style? I know that was talked about for the one of, at the church on four thirty-six. We didn't, when we did that initial plan, that was a mini roundabout. No?
No, I don't recall that. Yeah, these are all going to be similar in size to what you see at, like, Elwin for the last block, that's me.
They have to be big enough to handle some of my preference.
Does it make sense to be putting signage in the roundabout so people know? You know, give me some direction about or set something?
Are you talking like wayfinding signage, like downtown? Or are you just talking like Chevron arrows, telling you to make sure they're going this way here?
Wayfinding.
Typically, it's more just like the Chevrons and stuff like that directly into the roundabout, because we want them to focus on it, and we want them to focus on pedestrians too. We don't want to get them caught up, lucky now.
Yeah.
At that point, maybe through the roundabout, that's where you put the wayfinding signs.
Yeah. Just seems like there needs to be more wayfinding. I don't know exactly where to put them.
Yeah, no, and I think that's something we can update with the policy, but it kind of goes back to how into the weeds do we want to get with the policy? You know what I mean? Because right now, we have some policies, it doesn't need to be there because it went out with the project, it was completed. You know what I mean? So we kind of want to stand above it, but I think there's things we can work on with Kendra and Drew to talk about wayfinding and.
Yeah, that was my thought too, in terms of, you know, if there's a policy that says, you know, improve wayfinding signs to as a parking rights, so that, once you do it, then it becomes a outdated policy, you know? So certainly, in the projects, it should be called out. And something like wayfinding signage could be incorporated into an existing tip project as opposed to be called out directly. It really is just adding a few signs here and there.
Right. And you know, that could come off, but, you know, by the outlet mall, some more signage, like, there's more stuff beyond, you know?
Yes, and we received that comment a lot of people who, you know, push the public paths to go to McDonald's, they don't even realize that downtown's there, you know, because that's what they. And even on I ninety-eight, I'm surprised that there is no historic downtown this way, you know?
Yeah.
Kind of like there is for some quality, but not really. But, you know, we can have a high-level wayfinding policy that even once signs are added and stuff, it still makes sense.
Exactly.
High level of that. So thinking beyond the near-term, midterm projects that are already on the tip, does anyone have thoughts on other long-term projects that aren't going to be here on the tip?
I think just to elaborate, so as we're looking at the transportation element, as we mentioned earlier, it's great, it's clear the planning that you guys have been doing for a long time. It's very consistent with kind of where we've arrived in terms of focus on improving multimodal safety, thinking about completing that network for people walking and biking, some of the key capacity needs. You can see the bypass up here, some intersection improvements. So those are on there. I think our interest is, the last piece of this element that we're working with public work staff on is really to kind of hone in on that plan list. Are there additional needs? We certainly, you know, can speak to, to the extent there's additional needs, it's, you know, continuing to build out that sidewalk, continuing to build out that bicycle network. But if there are specific projects that you as planning commissioners would like to be front of minds for approaching that task, we'd certainly welcome it. So I don't expect that you guys have memorized your tip. It's a pretty long document, and there's a lot there. But I also respect that you guys are daily users of the transportation system. And so it would be good just to kind of hear if there are specific challenging areas that you would recommend that we be considering in the project list.
Just a procedural suggestion before we go into too much, just kind of general back and forth discussion. You may want to finish the presentation and go to a public hearing, even though we don't have somebody here.
Right.
For the sake of making sure that we address that.
And all this.
Okay. I think you're about done.
About done. So just talking about what the next steps are. So we would like to come back a third time, either the next one or the one on thirteen, depending on how long you'd like to review all our materials. We gave you a lot in the packet, so up to you on that. But the idea is, once you have a chance to review, giving us your. But but the idea is, once you have a chance to review, giving us your feedback. And then at that point, we'd really, hopefully close enough to be talking about approval. One one piece that we don't quite have yet, but we're very closely getting is is the long term funding piece. So so that will help inform. So we have a the tip, and then thinking about that full twenty year period, what additional funding does the city have in that twenty year period to find, potentially find additional projects? And and how many projects could potentially include it there, uh, in this plan? So that's it for our for our updated.
So in downtown north end, there's that alley, I think it's it's got a name that's behind everything along the railroad track.
The solid.
And it's all like gravel and something like that. Is that private property or is that?
No, that is public. Some, some streets are public street.
Okay.
Um, we we have, and this is something that you guys will all be invited to as well. We have a plan, we've just hired a consultant um site workshop to prepare a new um master plan for William McShade Park, which is where the evil is. And as a part of that master plan process, we wanna look at the relationship from McCollum Street to the park in downtown. Because right now, it's kind of this no man's land, where it's, just like you said, kind of a gravelly mess and old telephone poles. But there's opportunity there to really increase the efficiency of the parking and connection between the park and downtown with some design improvements. Uh, that's something that will be kicking off in about a month, and we'll be hoping to process that as well.
And and and, uh, you know where Tweeds is? And they've got the garbage cans all right there, just totally ugly. There's some weird like metal art things, what are those?
That is art, and it was specifically designed, this is probably like twelve or thirteen years ago, as a way to help screen those dumpsters.
Well, they're all the guys, sorry.
Yeah, McCollum is interesting, though. We we definitely received some comments about people not realizing that was that wasn't even public parking, because you wouldn't really know that too quickly, yes. It's just an alleyway, and you would just imagine, oh, those are probably just those private parcels parking. But no, that's public parking. And so so I I guess ways to make that look more official in in the design and the connecting to the park.
And there's always weeds along there too, so it still makes it feel like it's, you know. And then behind volition, there's like a dirt art garage. Is that public or?
It's, yeah, it's private property, but we have improvement to it.
Okay. Okay.
And and part of the tip is is identifying potentially an additional place downtown parcels that have more public parking.
Um, next to the moose lodge, had another vacant lot there. I think the ci- did the city buy that?
Yeah, I don't, did we sell that or?
That's a good question. We bought it.
No.
And the other lot we're looking at is that Theodore Montic, uh, right, second, in the southeast corner, that they both go up there. It's another potential parking area. And then back to McCollum, with that master plan, Russell, we can additional parking. How can we get additional parking in there, because that requires maybe there are dual tracks coming in there for the street. I mean, do we need dual tracks coming in that park? Can we shift that over and get more parking, wayfinding signage, or the parking rights and whatnot, to get people parking in front of businesses?
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking for wayfinding. As downtown expand, can we get more businesses down there, bring a lot more upgrades?
Yeah, that's a policy issue. So that's something like, the downtown foundation would hopefully direct their businesses to have employees parking a little more remote, more right for the businesses, for the um customers of the business.
So are we going to use our policies to enforce that or just go for it?
Uh, I mean, that's a possibility, and when it comes to enforcement, that's a little more difficult. We're not the size of a community that would have a parking officer.
But even so, we could differentiate between an employee and a customer.
Yeah.
But as a business owner, I would probably tell my employees they need to be somewhere else, otherwise you're hurting the business.
Yeah.
I think it's kind of an internal thing.
Do you want to do a public hearing?
We have to say. All right, still nobody other than us.
All right, well, let's open the public hearing portion of this. And being that there is, what time is? Seven, seven oh five. Open the uh, the public hearing part, being that there's nobody here, um, we'll go ahead and close it at seven oh six. And then I guess we're at the part where the commissioners, they wanna deliberate, have the questions um to be in time to do that.
And one point for for you guys, we we did receive a few comments, and so we'll be working with staff to consider those. And and up the, for the next draft, we should keep you satisfied. Yeah, we will.
Yeah, I got those. Uh, so did I, I maybe I missed it, but did we, I almost thought that the signals was an issue for, you know, signals in town? Is that no longer?
So, you know, that is an issue. That's why we, one of the reasons that cities avoid going traffic signals is there's cost and it's, I get that. And the traffic circle is safer and also doesn't require.
I just hear you have signals at the couple of places here. Is that for the future, that we would eventually do that signal center?
Um, well, yes, for a while, there on the tip, there's been a potential signal at Ballarat right then way. For the the people, may maybe turns off a Ballarat.
Right.
So, yes, the challenge of that would be, you know, it'd be the first city operated signal. And so so I I I guess we could throw that on top of the plate in terms of of, you know, you know, the looking for fresh and doing that. But but, you know, we we did look at 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 an all ways stop there. So the the challenge there is, yeah, well, um, I can, I can tell you it doesn't work really on a local service standpoint. Uh, but the challenge at that, in in particular, is is it's northern ways, that's the same challenge as as I've been to go. It's, you know, like store storefront, narrow right of way, yeah, you know, just just.
Yeah, si- signals here when you were coming down, shouldn't there, I get that, but I said, if, so if a signal center isn't realistic, is it realistic to keep that project on here as a future one, as an on priority list here then? Because you've got a signal at one forty six and fourteen three eight, and you got that Ballarat signal as a projected plan. But if we don't really anticipate ever doing that signal center, is that worth keeping on there?
So so two things, back to Ballarat and way, the tip, like we said, roundabout won't fit.
Right.
The signal will help us to some degree if we most likely contract it out to LaShka or the county to help us out with signal.
Okay.
And maintenance to run it for us.
You think that's an option rather than?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, most likely LaShka, since there are already two blocks away.
Right.
Uh, as were, was it four sixty?
Truck Town.
Yeah, Truck Town right there. I I can get back to you on that one. I think that one, I wanna say cabin, there's some agreement in the past where cabin, cabin would have to bring in and put in a signal at that intersection, and they tried to set up a little service at the summer, when they first started to put that trip in. So I think that's why that's sitting there right now, but I can get more information on that.
Okay, I I I think just from procedure, like if if you're gonna have a list of projects and have a priority list, if that's not realistic, that you're gonna do a signal center, then I think we should call out why. If, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna see there's gonna be one and cabin might do another one, that might be more same here. Otherwise, anyone who knows be different, is in the same world, why is it, I'm never gonna go signal center, right? As as available projects on your priority list. Um, the one project that I would think that I'd like to see something would be if there's some kind of improvements to be done in that Truck Town. I think, I spent a lot of time over there, could work on that downtown. Uh, even just a signage project would help a lot, something with the turn lanes for the semis would be nice. I know we're not diving into those such as signage projects, but you you don't have any cabinet improvements other than that signal for that area. Uh, I think it would be pretty cool to see something that would force the trucks into a circle instead of inviting each other going on.
So so we did do a traffic study out there, um, I think so, a few years back in in looking forward with the readiness center, the potential of going out there with our national guard.
Right.
How we're gonna move vehicles through that. So we are looking at that. Um, as far as specifics go about projects on that stretch road, we do have a roundabout at four sixty eight, the middle fork, which is the top end of those improvements.
Yeah.
Um, then I believe we have another roundabout that would be the intersection just south of there. And that was part of the study to put around about there as well. Um, again, that's just a study that was done until the readiness center hops on board and starts, you know, moving with their development. Uh, we won't, we won't see a movement on that. But it's also embodied in our actual development regulations for that area. So that's within one of our special districts, and we have our municipal code as chapter eighteen thirteen, which is special districts. And a part of that, um, the very first process for any development in that area of Truck Town and military or agency property is that they have to prepare a master plan that addresses circulation. So that will identify more specific improvements.
My my assumption, and and this is assumption not anything ever heard from you guys or anything like that, but my assumption is a lot of it is because TA is the way TA is. And so that makes sense if you have development of TA or develops, there's no push for them to make the changes to help with the traffic they're causing. So to the, to me, this is the type of situation where the city needs to step in and do a project to four thirty. Either putting signage on four sixty eight that tells the trucks you have to come in from this entrance, leave this entrance, or something like that, because I don't think TA would ever do a thing like that around. But again, that's that's assumption. So in terms of the recommended project, I think that you you don't, you can't really improve that. If they got sidewalks, I mean, you're not gonna be signaling for that specifically, roundabouts that hurt traffic there to get for truck traffic. Uh, so maybe just like a uh, turning up the updates or wiping of entrances or like that, you know, running out of.
So the entrances to the truck center on above fourteen C and north Benway dual?
They are, yeah, they're on the same side in one way or the other. So a lot of trucks know that they go in on fourteen C and come out on north Benway.
Yeah.
But that one truck that goes the wrong way completely messes it up. So a lot of traffic over there during the day, is that, that you guys luckily have addressed the parking on the side of the road, which is nice. I love that. But uh, yeah, especially, I mean, the pass closes, anything, any extra traffic?
Yeah.
And that all that gets come down.
Is table nine the same as table thirteen, like the same information?
Yeah.
I can't read it. You only boxes on.
Yeah, sorry, it doesn't work out on the map. Yes, you looked at it on the screen, or next time, we can put it on the top of seventeen.
Well, I think it's the same thing, but I can read this, um, it's still a little difficult, but that's not your problem.
You understand her.
That's okay. Uh, where, was this a list that you've books created or was this a list that's public works is already?
This was part of public works and and working with council on approving that. It's it's a a six year program, but it has projects also that are beyond six years on this. So it's more than near and midterm projects that the city has.
And every year, we go through a public hearing with the TIP, make that map you're looking at and adjust it based on what projects we finished, what maybe council wants to add a project, based on public comment. Uh, maybe we're deleting a project from where we're in, adjusting it. So every year, it's adopted again, so change it.
The roundabout in Mountside Old Works, that's D and T's project, right?
At Mountside Old Works?
Yeah.
Uh, case thirty one?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, that's our project, just gonna be on there on two oh two?
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll, it'll go through their review process, but it's hard, it's hard.
Okay.
Can you see it, the existing, like, uh, the boosting, like, uh, public transit? Uh, obviously, the existing does not go up to Truck Town. There is why, and maybe I'm missing, there's why to address, you know, future possibly going to Truck Town? Or is that not something that you're placing that in some new city control?
Yeah, so we can advocate to metro, to be increased service, but ultimately it's up to them for route planning. And we have some on about transit that provides more localized and door-to-door types of services. I don't think they have fixed route that goes out there.
Is that something that we want on the comprehensive plan? I mean, it's, it's a vision, right?
It's it's something we can't have, you know, we we can't have service related policies. And I, yeah, I I I would add, so 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 value has has deviated fixed route service is what they call it. So they can, it's it's essentially a dollar ride, and and so so they can go up to that to that area. But if the city thinks that this is, it's important for sure, we can, we can add some some service goals um, um, to the transportation plan, uh, just acknowledging that, not necessarily something in the city's direct control.
Right, yeah, it seems like in Truck Town and also from all those new apartments going in, and the meal farm, it'd be nice if we had some sort of transportation and bring them in to go grocery shopping and then bring them back out. Then we don't have to use the cars and drive.
I didn't put two together, you guys, they put the bus.
Bus stop there, yeah, yeah.
Because they feel rough to run it.
That's not intended at this point.
Is that called a bus stop?
That's a bus stop.
It's cool.
But so value of all transportation is still shot there. And and one thing that we did hear from them was just coordination. They would, they would like to see coordination with the city on on site design for new developments, just to make sure there is a logical place to put, to put a bus stop for them. And 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 also access, walking access to the houses, to that location.
I wouldn't be surprised if transit would have, or we didn't go out that way on some purpose, right?
I agree. We can revisit, we'll look at our transit maps and just kind of in terms of city's intent. It it may be too far to draw a line, but I think there are other ways that we can kind of just signal some interest in that connection. And, you know, I've heard some good ideas here today, you know, ones that clearly have been flushed out. Specifically, I don't know that there's gonna be, um, you know, as a part of the project, I don't know, but we'll get to an absolute answer on it. But, you know, something you can also do as a part of the project is to kind of put some actions of additional studies you guys can do, kind of look forward to some of these ideas, so.
Um, back to the transit really quick, I think the idea, we don't really have a control over measurements to form the other transit, what exactly where they wanna go. But during the development review process, like we kind of discussed, we can may maybe make it, work on some kind of policy or goal that during the development review policy, especially out of the north Benway past Dog and Meal Farm, uh, we'll let some homey value transit, you know, take a look, review, and maybe they wanna put in a shelter, a spot, this spot, just to kind of give a spot for people to come, so they don't have to go to twenty different locations. It's just three bus stops, you know, along the stretch. And that will push them to create routes out that way. So I think that's the direction we probably go.
And and there are some some trade offs in terms of some of the, you know, what was those new urbanist designs, a lot of newer housing developments, there's there's certainly a benefit from having narrow streets and house walking ability, it reduces the hardest game. But but for for some value of transportation, for example, they, you know, they they've commented that some sometimes it will take shows longer to get through if there's, if if there's parking on both sides and it's too narrow. It, not that they can't get through, but it just will take a longer time. So so again, just in terms of side review, a lot of that has has already been taken into consideration in newer developments, but just making sure that the side review makes sense to them. Um, and 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 obviously, if they can get through in an efficient way, that will incentivize them to provide more service to those.
And anything else? Any comments? Sounds like.
So I think for next steps, I think you guys will gather the comments that you've heard tonight. Uh, maybe also consider the comments we received in the public hearing. Staff provided a few comments for consideration at all. And I think what we'd like to do is maybe put those into red line formats, like some suggestion policy revisions that you can see at your next meeting that addresses some of those.
And we can accept any written uh, comments, uh, if any, if you have any questions. Do you know what all those?
Um, this is figure seven, is this just um vehicle conditions or is this simply pedestrian, bicycle conditions?
Yeah, yeah, all types of conditions, yeah. Oh, one thing I didn't mention, so on, on the safety slide, so I, I did overlay the collision map there. And you can see that there is some, some, some overlap between those, those roundabout locations and, and collisions.
I think it's a great idea to have something, it's just, it's, it's almost like when you get an idea in your head and you just, you keep going with it because it's stuck in your head. That's kind of how it feels to me. But I, I actually like them, it's from the East Coast, so I'm, I'm familiar with them, comfortable with them. It just feels like a lot in very small, you know, states.
Have you seen some that operated better than others or more safely than others?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, even, even just today, I was going through the roundabout right by this, this swab. And someone was crossing, and the car in front of me just didn't see him because the vegetation, it's just, I, I mean, it's pretty. There should be vegetation, you know, but I think they just weren't paying attention. And, I mean, you can have a right to, you know, you can do things, but it's still like, you're like, okay, I can go, you know? Um, and again, there are definitely different drivers, for sure. Um, but it feels like sometimes the roundabout is great as like an arrival, like, okay, yeah, here and there, I am looking around, but if it's, yeah, slow down, but if it's like, okay, here I go, and then here I go, it almost feels like you're at the fair, you know? You're just throwing around everywhere, so, um, so it's concerned that like, well, I'll just be really disinterested. Where we are, but, um, well, I think people really don't like that. I mean, I personally have been well-honed at and yelled at for going too slow. Because I'm worried about pedestrians specifically, because there are so many crossings, especially one by last shop. And, um, so I, yeah, I do go really slow. Don't want to let anyone, but, um, people don't like it, so. It does make me wonder, I mean, they, they are, they, they do serve a purpose, but surely there's other options. I think.
I don't, I mean, I know I brought up the trucks earlier, but the ones that are on the, the truck route, like, I don't, do we have the exact restrictions on this, on the types of trucks that come in on, on these streets? Like, I don't, I haven't actually ever seen a truck.
There are limitations within the downtown core.
Do we have a, do we have signage for that?
I think we do.
Yeah, there are two blocks on North Benway between W and Ballarat, is a long truck route.
Okay.
Whether or not to enforce or not, or is kind of different matter.
And there's a specific no truck turning, um, off of North Benway and the Benway Boulevard. Because in the past, multiple times, trucks had run into a corner too sharply and were in the building.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, interesting.
But in terms of the roundabout design, it's like, what are they, Drew Kendricks, like a WB, was it 67? It's like a 53-foot trailer is looking the same. That's why you have that big footprint in the middle that it can get. So when you see them up on that with their trailer, that's, that's intended for, not driving that, that's what it's intended for, so.
And that's a full lot of all type, so much earlier, that, that is, you know, the truck center. But that would be 67.
First time I've seen a roundabout, I will definitely. If you don't know that it is slow.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've done studying. Maybe go slow on it. Slow is good, but, yeah, jam, it goes slow.
I've always noticed some people, you know, by the casino, I don't think people just run straight into that. I'm like, they're always rebuilding it. Like, it's a red wall, we're always passing it and hanging up again. I like the roundabouts. I feel like it makes you slow down, it makes you kind of begin to watch. I feel like it makes it flow faster too, so.
This is just my personal, but as a pedestrian, I prefer roundabouts because you don't have to wait forever. Also, when you come to a four-way stop and you're waiting for all the cross-traffic, you're cross-traffic. At a roundabout, the driver sees you and then stop and you go, yeah. So if you may be faster, and maybe not as safe in some circumstances, but at least you hit the right way.
Sure.
Does anybody else have anything else in mind, Sengi?
And just on the topic of roundabouts, um, I may have missed, but I don't recall, but, um, like lighting, for looking at the evening hours, it does get dark, it stays dark a lot, and winter, like, these roundabouts would be a lot of it, assuming.
See the kind of wide extended reviews with the, the recent roundabouts.
Are we seeing lighting make a difference? Crosswalk, park, and roundabout, pedestrian?
We generally have the, the taller Cobra Head style lights at the roundabouts. But then in downtown areas, we also have pedestrian scale.
Both.
Every situation is unique and you go through the lighting, it's not based on emission, from which emission we have to provide. In the downtown core, probably less lights because we already have those 12 pedestrian lights every 50 feet, right? The Meal Farm, there's nothing out there, so, yeah, we have to put up a couple extra curbs to make the crosswalks a little bit more, which is.
Anything else? Okay, looks like we can call this meeting.
We need to talk about next meeting or, because we said you're considering two days.
Obviously, yeah, um, in terms of review time, so. Uh, and we'll, we'll be doing some, some additional edits too, so that might factor in, but we can, either, either of those days, thanks.
So 9:22 would be our next regular meeting time. Does that give you guys enough time to consider comments?
We should work with you, Tom, like confirming the funding section and making any final adjustments to the project list based on that. I think we're ready to have that conversation with you, but we don't know what you're gonna think.
If it's all the same, I just, let's maybe push it off to the second meeting in October, just to give us time, just to get everything dialed in. I don't want to come back, like, with a few more not quite answered and I just finalize it. Because our next step is to go to the transportation planning committee at the end of October, which we might not be good, and then to council for acceptance in November. So I just want to get everything dialed in. I don't want there to be any questions because we didn't quite consider things, so. Uh, it's a quick turnaround, too, it's, yeah, a few things.
Yeah, there's one seventy every little time.
Plus, we gotta get the draft and pack it out, so that's tough, yeah.
Yeah, so the next time then would be on the 13th. I don't know if we have other agenda items, so if we don't have other specific agenda items, we can't, but, uh.
And I think you have the permission a moment, if anybody wanted to look at it a little further, you know, feel your comments. When do you want the planning commission to cut off so that you guys can make sure you, like, have enough time to address any comments that we have?
So our, our planning commission meeting will be October 13th, Thursday. So Mike wins here, when you send out the agenda, so like three, four?
Yeah.
So sixth. Can we say like, two weeks, about the 20th, 30th September, is that? Yeah, I guess about two weeks there, we can work on the questions we have now, if there's anything additional.
Good.
Should be okay.
This is really good.
We'll have a budget with them too, so I can.
Okay, well, um, thank you everybody for contributing, and we'll call the meeting at 7:29.